Really going to be a fun time, great opportunity for the community to come together and celebrate responsibly. The shows are going to be magnificent as they have been in years past. Additionally, if you plan on coming to the Aurora Transportation Center for one day only, and this is a huge credit to our contractors in addition to the Public Works Department, the Aurora Transportation Center and the River Edge Park Pedestrian Bridge will be open on July 3rd for people to cross on over and get to the ATC easily. So that way they can get over there and of course enjoy the festivities to come. So that is really exciting and a great opportunity again for the community. And we'd like to reveal tonight, pretty exciting honor, he'll be here next week to take a picture with the mayor, Hugo Saltegierl is going to be this year's grand marshal at the Fourth of July Parade. Let's give it up for Hugo. Hugo, a community stalwart here, he does some amazing work, did some great stuff with Hesett House in the past and now works as the executive director of a nonprofit in the area. Hugo is such, just an amazing man, amazing person, such a great guy to talk with and deal with. And it's going to be great to see him serve as the grand marshal for this year's parade. So be sure if you're coming on out to wave hi to him as he leads the parade off. It's going to be another big parade here in downtown. We encourage everybody to come on out. Going to step off at 10:00 AM. So really recommend if you're going to come on out, come on out around 9:00, 9:30. Make sure you get some parking and get everything ready for you to go so that way you can enjoy the parade and have a good time here in the community. So very brief here tonight. Don't shoot off those fireworks at home. Come on out and watch the fireworks. Watch the pros do them here on July 3rd and enjoy the parade on July 4th.
Thank you, John. And then we have a short, real short presentation from the Community Foundation. We have a lot of new alderpeople. So this, I know some of the more seasoned alderpeople are familiar with the Community Foundation. They're doing a ribbon cutting here in Aurora as they open their new facility. They've invited everybody to come. But if you have just a few minutes you want to share and introduce yourself and...
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for inviting us here tonight. It's a privilege to be here and tell you just a little bit about us. We've been in Aurora for 77 years and we are making this our home by having our primary office here at 1971 West Downer. We will have a ribbon cutting and open house and are inviting, you know, about 70 people. And you know, we would love it if any of you are available, if you're able to come. Our goal from this event is just to be able to welcome you to our new office space and recognize the fact that we've been in this community for the 77 years. So first of all, we just want to thank the city of Aurora and the generous residents and the so many individuals and businesses that have given generously over the years. We currently have over 700 funds that we manage because of the generosity of many Aurora residents and businesses. Out of those, about half are scholarship funds. And this year alone, we gave out over $3.4 million in scholarships. And because of that, many Aurora residents and many of our current students are able to receive scholarships from the Community Foundation. So it is an honor to be able to work alongside so many generous individuals, businesses, community members who want to give back and really support their community. Besides our grants, we, I mean, besides our scholarships, we also offer many grants to nonprofits in the community. This spring alone, we're giving out over 24 grants through our discretionary program. And because of partnerships with Representative Hernandez, who is here tonight, as well as Representative Kiffowit, we're able to offer an additional over almost 30 agencies' grants through state allocations. So we are just so proud to be a partner with so many agencies, with state and local government, as well as so many businesses in this community. And look forward to doing it year after year here in Aurora in our new home. So thank you so much for this opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
Any members of the council have any questions?
Mayor, could we please have the day and time of your ribbon cutting?
Alderwoman Smith?
Sure.
I believe that's, go ahead, but I believe that's been emailed to the Alderman's office.
Yes, but it is this Thursday.
But I thought the public might want to know.
Oh, sure. Okay. It's this Thursday, June 26th at 3:00.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
We are the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley. And we do have some materials just in case you aren't as familiar with us that we wanted to pass out.
It's like Santa Claus came.
It is like Santa Claus.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And we are always welcoming you to come to our, you know, new office space and visit with us. If you're not able to make it on the 26th, please come by. Stop by, say hello, learn more about us, and you know, we'll be happy to show you a little bit more about the work that we're doing. So thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to share with the council tonight, just let, depending on how things go, that this will be Rick Beanstra's last night in what we, the attorneys call the penalty box. He still be, will be working with, with the city and working on a smooth transition. We intend to retain Shane Banks and keep Mr. Beanstra's expertise on speed dial. So this is not his last day, but it is last time serving in the penalty box. So I just wanted to take a minute to publicly recognize some of his contributions to the city of Aurora. Rick Beanstra helped pull Aurora's municipal code out of the 1980s and into the 21st century. He's very familiar with it. He played an instrumental role during COVID-19 by navigating the legal framework to allow the city to continue operations during a national emergency and allowing the city council to continue their meetings and deliberations. Rick also played a role of leader in the department by encouraging other attorneys to attend professional organizations, be part of the Illinois State Bar and other legal, local, and regional legal professional organizations. He worked to improve the customer service that our law department provides to a lot of the other departments and has been recognized by some of his peers for that contribution. I say that his reputation in municipal circles has set a standard. His work has set precedent in the legal community as one of the most respected municipal attorneys in the state of Illinois. And then I guess I'll just say personally, thank you, Rick, for sticking through the transition. Till we have a new attorney, I look forward to working with you as partner with Shane Banks or if you rename it and it becomes Beanstra and Associates. But there's no question that you're, you're recognized in the legal community here in the state of Illinois as one of the best. And we appreciate your service here to the city of Aurora. I know there might be some senior alderpeople that might also have some words to add to that, might have some experiences with Mr. Beanstra. Go ahead, Alderman Franco.
So I just want to thank Mr. Beanstra for his service here, consummate professional. And I love the way he would explain things when you ask him a question in legalese, knowing that you didn't get it, and going to the second page and say, okay, this is really what I mean by that. So thank you for giving us both versions because it's important to know the legal aspect and then the blue collar aspect. So thank you for clearing all that up over the years. And we do appreciate it. Thank you for your service.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, Rick, I too want to thank you for your years of service. I can't believe it's been eight years. Time's gone by quick. I appreciate all the sage advice you gave the council and the timely contact. You, when we couldn't reach you the first time, you were for sure to give us a call back and give us your, your best advice, which was truly needed at the time. And you just oversaw our first-class legal department for our city these last eight years. And appreciate everything that you've done for the city and, and what you've been able to do, working with a good staff. So I wish you well.
Thank you, Alderman Seville. Alderwoman Smith?
Yeah, so Rick, sometimes I wanted to be in the room when your face looked at the phone and a message came from me that said, can you talk? Can you chat? Because I know you were rolling your eyes and thinking, oh my gosh, now what does she want? I really appreciate the time that you spent with me over the last six years that I've been an alderwoman and the attorney-client privilege that you awarded me. I always felt very comfortable talking to you about whatever manner it was. And it wasn't always pretty about, you know, what was going on, but you were always so frank, so honest. And even when we didn't agree, I, I really listened to you and I always took what you said in, you know, in part of my decision-making. So you were very valuable to me personally. You were definitely and still are very valuable to the city and appreciate the years of service. You've had, what, two babies since you've been here? You look wonderful for two, you look wonderful for birthing two children. So best of luck to you in the future. And if we're still keeping you on in any way, shape, or form, you'll still get my text. Thank you.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes, all these years going so fast. But thank you, thank you so much, really. Thank you for all the service to the, to the city. And thank you to have the time to explain us. Sometimes when we are in confusion times and you have the right words to explain and understanding why is what it is. And so we have very good times in the city, but also all these years, so we have sometimes difficult times. And sometimes we are confusing and we don't know what is the right way to vote or whatever. So we asking you and you give the right answer all the time and make us or make me to make the right decision. Thank you so much, Rick, for all your service, really.
Thank you, Alderwoman. If we could just give Rick a round of applause and express our appreciation. Appreciate all your service, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will the clerk please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please share with us the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Sunny.
Thank you, Sunny. You have three minutes beginning now.
The City's annual Juneteenth flag raising ceremony was canceled until the public criticism, according to the press. The mayor did a last-minute arrangement in the evening, June 18th. Probably three or five people showed up. Your sideshow was insulting to the Black community. Juneteenth is a holiday that celebrates the emancipation of enslaved people in the U.S. Juneteenth is rooted in Black history and culture and is primarily celebrated by the Black community. It is a well-known celebration for the ending of slavery. Millions of Africans were forcibly taken from Africa and subjected to brutal conditions in America. The slave trade caused suffering and death during the journey. Slavery affects Black America through system of racism. Slavery still fell today in areas of inequality and criminal justice. The civil rights movement fought for the remaining of slavery and segregation. Black America fought for civil rights. Here to thank some of the civil rights leaders who lost their lives and struggled for freedom, Margaret Evans, Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, and others. The mayor of Aurora, Illinois, John Lash, had a high production of gay pride in June 2025. Gay rights is not the same as civil rights. Black Americans were enslaved for 400 years. The other groups were not slaves. The mayor of Aurora is going to have a hit production event for Hispanics. Hispanics were not enslaved for 400 years. They were not beat up, chained, dragged out of Mexico for 400 years. Pride and gay rights was borrowed from Black freedom movements. Here to thank Mayor Richard Ervin for celebrating Juneteenth as federal holiday for the last three years. He gave us Aurora a great gathering to showcase the richness of Black culture and heritage. Here to thank Aurora Police Chief Keith Cross for recognizing Juneteenth flag, which always blame him. Here to thank Aurora Police Chief Police for recognizing African heritage. And he has the support of 1.4 billion Africans from Africa. I don't see why you don't, you don't, you do not, why you did not criticize him when he had a July 4th police car, but you always bring up the July 4th, the July card that was wrapped by the African cloth. So it seems to me you have some kind of racism every time a police department recognizes.
Your time runs up. Thank you, Sunny.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, are there any other members of the public wishing to make public comment?
Yes, the next speaker is Cindy McLarenan.
It never be me, except I'm going to pass and see how this works.
Okay. Next speaker is Cynthia Latimer.
For the record, I am speaking as an individual, not in affiliation with any organization or on behalf of any organization or any board or commission. I am truly in disbelief at all that has transpired. These actions and follow explanations have been egregious, to say the least. I am here to add these comments into the record. To hold one flag raising, our pride flag raising, with intentionality and excellence on June 6th, which was an absolutely outstanding community event, compliment, job well done. Then, and with intentionality, cancel the Juneteenth Day Community Flag Raising Event for the 19th, less than two weeks after the previous flag raising, is simply and blatantly disrespectful. With the new administration, changes are expected in both the things that are done and the level of knowledge about how to do things. If you decided you were not doing flag raisings, then you should not have done flag raisings. Apparently, what you really meant was that you were doing flag raisings for some, but not for others. Additionally, it wasn't that your administration did not know how to do flag raisings because you had just done one on June 6th in stellar fashion. So why? Why did and does your administration think it is acceptable for the city to cancel the Juneteenth Day Community Flag Raising? Why cancel this one? Again, with intentionality, you planned, publicized, and held a flag raising. Then a few days later, with intentionality, you canceled the Community Juneteenth Day Flag Raising with no notice, I might add. Speaking of noticed, why didn't you, and when were you going to notify the community announcing the cancellation? Our city has all kinds of public notice options. The event was in the papers that week and still on the website on the morning of June 18th. Why, why did you throw together a last-minute, what must have been private fundraising the night before Juneteenth at City Hall, then blast it all over the place as if this was your intended plan all along? It had to be private because again, there was no notification. So the public did not have an opportunity to participate. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. Why did you feel so comfortable making this conscious intentional decision? Why were these actions acceptable to you? All of these were unforced errors. We have had a well-attended, purposeful event of culture and excellence, a thought-provoking, meaningful day with full community participation. You took that away from the community, you took that away from our children, and you took that away from all others that were there in support. What is your intended message to the community, specifically to the Black community? What's next? Are these mind games? Did you think we would not notice? Again, I do not know your intended message.
Ms. Latimer, your time is up. Thank you.
But message received.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Greg Zilioli.
I feel like there's a block here I might want to wait for as well. Is that possible?
You can go now. We'll make time if we need more time.
Okay. Completely changing the subject and I'm terribly sorry. My name is Greg Zilioli.
If you could step up to one of the podiums and state your name.
Never done this before. I'm terribly sorry.
No problem. Your three minutes begins now, mister.
Thank you, sir. My name is Greg Zilioli, and I run a program called A Call to Shoulders. Seven years ago, I moved into a building on Stope Island called The Die House, specifically the Stope Island Woolen Mill Die House. And in there, I built a wood shop and I teach veterans how to do woodworking for free and I help them start their own home business. It's a suicide prevention program by preventing them from ever getting to the point where they're considering it. Now, for the last seven years that I've been doing this, I've basically been keeping my head down and trying to prove what I've been doing is going to work. I have that data now. And recently, definitely within the last, less than within the last six months, and I understand that that's important, I've been given permission to use the space that was formerly QT's through the Fourth of July. So right over here on Stope Island. The amazing thing about that is that that is actually the Stope Island Woolen Mill Store. So we're going to have an opportunity for the first time since 1890s to sell something in that store space that was made in the Stope Island Woolen Mill space. So for the Fourth of July, just through that time, basically, I'll be working with veterans in there. And on the Fourth of July, thank you guys so much for providing transportation and portal lets out the side of, outside of the shop and a lovely parade crowd that's going to be right there. Because we'll be doing something similar to the Christmas market where we'll be providing veterans an opportunity to sell the items that they're making and make some money right there on the Fourth of July, selling directly to the public and giving them a chance to turn their time into value. I think that's under three minutes.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you, guys.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Ricky Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Ricky Rogers. I will be speaking on behalf of the African American Mini Unity. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the new council members as has been elected officials at this moment. And we hope and pray that you all can continue to support African American Mini Unity and the things that we do for the community as far as our programs, services, community celebrations, et cetera. But I'm here tonight to talk about our Juneteenth celebration that took place on June 14th at MLK Park. We had about 6,000 people that attended the event. And so all the council members that supported, of course, the city of Aurora that supported it, we want to thank you all for, for that. And hopefully in the future, as we enter into our 25th Annual Juneteenth Celebration that you will continue to support that cause. But I do want to look at this also, is that the African American Mini Unity has been doing this for over 24 years. The flag raising that take, that took place in the city of Aurora in the past, it started on 2021. That's when the mayor in this town, of course, was Richard at that time, made it a holiday in accordance with Joe Biden, President. So at that time, that was the first time that the flag raising actually took place. So traditionally and historically, African American Mini Unity has done their event, and then of course, the city of Aurora has done their event. So we had no input in the flag raising. We was not a part of the flag raising. The only time we was acknowledged when it happened the first time. So I just want to clarify that. And, and maybe in the future, maybe we can say we can combine the two. But as of right now, everything that we do as an organization and everything that the city has done in the past has always been separate. But in the future, we can look at how we can partner and do bigger, better things. So, so thank you for this opportunity to share my insights as far as what we have done as an organization and how we're going to continue to strive and have our annual Juneteenth Celebration. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment.
Theodosha. Theodia, my apologies.
I'm used to it. I've been dealing with that for many, many years. So don't worry. Theodia.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just noticed, Mayor, that Ricky's time was not going. So anyway, again, my name is Theodia Gillespie. I'm the president of the Quay County Urban League. And I am here with Mr. Tyrone Johnson from the NAACP, representing President Michael Childress, and Regina Brent of Unity Partnership. So I'm not going to repeat all the things that everyone else said because we all know that the cancellation was very disappointing. And in our respect, that it was a disrespect to our community that has traditionally been recognized through this event for decades, as Richard indicated. But in the past three years, when it became a national holiday, it was very important for the members of this community. While the city celebrates the LGBT community with the public flag raising, not a celebration of a national holiday, it reminds, it remains salient on Juneteenth, Mayor, the first federal holiday that dedicated to Black history and Black freedom. This salient is very harmful to us in this community. And we should not use another organization, Ricky's organization, to say that that is the replacement. This is a national holiday Ricky has been doing Juneteenth as a community event, but as a national holiday, the community wanted to celebrate that holiday. So Aurora has always valued diversity and inclusion, yet leadership without outreach to certain community feels just like a performative. We urge the city to, to be transparent about what recognizing this holiday entails and to consider how national holidays, like the Fourth of July, are acknowledged and what are the costs involved based on what your comments in Facebook. So I want to engage you to speak directly to the community rather than relying solely on social media and Facebook to facilitate the, your decision. As a long-time taxpayer and individual has, have served on governing boards, we want to ensure that every cherished tradition is respected and strengthened. What support, we support physical responsibility for the city as taxpayers. What we demand is respect for our culture and our community, not what administration perceive as necessary for the African American community. Because, Mayor, Black freedom is not an afterthought, but the foundation of our ongoing progress in this country. And I want you and anyone else who seek to divide our community will find that when I say, trust me when I say, it would never happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. The clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment.
Regina Brent.
Thank you for joining us. Brent, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor Lash and the city council. I am a 25-year resident of Aurora, retired from Illinois Attorney General's Office of 30 years, where I served as a mediator and advocate for the people of the state of Illinois. I would like to address the importance of properly posting the Juneteenth flag since it is a national holiday. We celebrate and commemorate the freedom of African people who have been held in bondage for over 400 years. I think to display the flag properly acknowledges and recognizes the fact that we're unjustly held against our will long after President Abraham Lincoln had emancipated enslaved Africans earlier, in 1865. The state of Texas enslaved African people who learned much later that slavery had been abolished two years prior than when they were released, which was in 1865. If you fail to acknowledge our freedom by not properly posting the flag, you missed the teaching moment, the spreading of good news. And failure to do so makes your government is wrong today as the Texas government was in 1863. Freedom is what America was built on, the freedom of expression and even freedom of speech. However, today, it has become challenging. On June 14th, politicians and their spouses were shot and killed because of their freedom of beliefs and political stance. June 17th, 2015, was the 10th anniversary of nine worshippers, their senior pastor and state senator Clementa C. Pickney, all were murdered by a little white boy named Dylan Roof after entering the Emmanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church, better known as Mother Emmanuel. He pretended he was there for Bible study and immediately took their freedom. He immediately took their lives. By improperly posting the Juneteenth flag in the city of Aurora, insinuates our people's freedom is not important, but you properly displayed other flags because they matter. What about Black folks? While I know the late, great Alderwoman and philanthropist Anita Heartburn was honored on Juneteenth, it is still your fiduciary duty as our city government and representative to honor that Juneteenth flag by posting it wherever any other flag had been displayed in the past and for the future. Our request is not only due to the respect of the Black community, which is entitled to it, but it would serve as an educational tool that would remind Aurora citizens that in this town, everyone is free, free to get education, free for job opportunities and equal justice. I posted this flag in front of my home and will post the Fourth of July flag as well. However, we know America became free in 1776. They succeeded from Great Britain and celebrated Independence Day. Black people have a right to celebrate. Black people have a right to celebrate Juneteenth.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Brent. And the next, the other clerk, please call the speaker, next speaker.
Mercy Galicia.
Hello.
Ms. Galicia, you have three minutes beginning now. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone, our festival is coming up this coming Saturday. It'll be at Wyler Park. You're all invited to come. It'll start at noon. We will not be serving any liquor until after 2:00. It's hot. We will have extra tents to accommodate because of the sun and the temperature being as hot as it is. But it is a nice area, the pavilions. We don't really have a lot of shade because the pavilion is not very white, but we do have enough coverage. There's a play area for the kids to hang around and have a place to play and family-oriented for that time being. And then, later on, for the adults, there's plenty of music and dancing. Food trucks will be down there, too. And it'll be over at 10:00. We will stop serving liquor at 9:30. It's more le, mostly geared towards couples, but everyone's welcome to come. Thank you, and I hope to see you guys. I did bring some flyers if you guys want to pass them around. All right? Thanks again.
Thank you, Mercy. The clerk, please call this, name of the next speaker wishing off her public comment.
Shar Peterson.
I'm using my time to inform Alderman Toliver.
Alderman Toliver, you have three minutes beginning now.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is Mr. Toliver signed up?
He has signed up to speak.
Okay.
All right. We're good to go.
You have three, three minutes beginning now, Alderman Toliver.
So, it is very strange to be on this side of the dais. So, hello, City Council members. Now, as I thought I would be able to enjoy my private life for at least another year and a half, I've been brought out because of things that have been going on. So, today, I'm here to speak not only as a former public official, but as a proud Black man who is deeply disgusted by the actions of this city's current administration. The decision by the new mayor to cancel the Juneteenth flag raising ceremony, an event that honors the freedom of our ancestors and the ongoing struggle for justice, is a slap in the face of the Black community in Aurora. I find it ironic that for a man who loved to put Black faces on all of his campaign material, that the first chance you get to show the community some support, you do this. What makes this even more insulting is the fact that this same administration made no effort to cancel or scale back recent events like the Pride Parade or any other festivals. Those festivals were welcomed and fully supported by the city. But when it came to time to honor Black history and Black freedom, this mayor chose silence and cancellation. And when the community leaders called it out for what it was, blatant disrespect, the mayor scrambled to put together a last-minute rushed ceremony in under 24 hours, not out of sincerity, but out of shame. Shame sparked by a courageous Black voice that refused to be silenced. Now, instead of taking accountability, this administration is sending out campaign surrogates like Jasmine Garcia, who has never seen a city budget in her life, on social media to gaslight our community, telling us that the flag raising ceremony would have cost too much and that Richard Urban spent all the money. Let me be clear, this was never about money. This was about priorities, and this administration showed us exactly where we fall on that list. The new mayor then pops on Facebook to claim he supported other events thrown by Black organizers in the city. What he failed to mention is that him, along with three of the four new aldermen, were at the Juneteenth event for less than 15 minutes. You ended the long apology on Facebook by stating, "As people start to eye 2029, to remember that you are not going to deal with political theater." Well, sorry, John, you brought these actors to this play, and now this environment is here to stay. Let me end by saying this, Black leaders in Aurora are not going anywhere. We see what you did, we see what you're doing, and now the community will see exactly what you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toliver. The clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Michelle Gomes.
Ms. Gomes, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I am in support of the flag raising ceremonies, Mr. Lash, Mayor Lash. I want to start by thanking you for acknowledging the missteps and how the flag raising policy changes were rolled out and for your stated commitment to learning, listening, and serving with equity and inclusivity. That said, I respectfully disagree with the decision to eliminate city-supported flag raising ceremonies in their current form. 10 reasons. One, events are substance. While it's valid to critique empty gestures, these events are not performative. They are deeply meaningful, community-led expressions of culture, pride, and unity. Visibility is part of equity. Equity isn't just about where we spend money, it's also about who we publicly uplift. Raising a community's flag at a city hall sends a powerful message that you belong and your history matters here. These ceremonies have grown organically, I've attended every single one. I've seen the growing crowds, the joy, the pride, the intergenerational participation. These are not staged moments, they are community milestones. They build the next generation of leaders. Youth participation in flag raising plants the seeds of civic identity and future engagement. That's how inclusive democracies are built. They're already community-centered. The ceremonies are initiated and led by community members. The cost is minimal, the, the value is immense. There is no significant strain on city resources. These ceremonies are existing infrastructure, require only limited staff and coordination. They strengthen Aurora's public image. These events show the world that Aurora is a leader in cultural inclusion. They're good for our city's reputation and for attracting families, businesses, and visitors. They're about the people, not politicians. They aren't about pro-op, or photo ops, they're about stories, songs, speakers from the community. Local government simply stands alongside as they should. Cutting joy sends the wrong message. In difficult financial times and times in general, we shouldn't begin budget reductions by eliminating the few things that unify and uplift our residents. That's not reform, that's retreat. The, the community overwhelmingly supports this. There is a clear, visible demand to keep these events going. To remove them now is to ignore the voices that have been underrepresented. And I have a formal request to the City Council. In light of these points, I respectfully request that the members of the Aurora City Council draft and pass a resolution to continue supporting city-facilitated flag raising ceremonies. Maintain their current structure and modest budget. These events are not extravagant, they are empowering, and their continuation sends a clear message, Aurora doesn't just talk about diversity, we show up for it. Let's move forward, not by eliminating what works, but by embracing and refining it together. Respectfully, Michelle Gomes. I would just like to say, I've not been at one event where there hasn't been a smile or a tear, where some culture has been grateful that they were uplifted and acknowledged by the City of Aurora itself. I, I hope and ask that you reconsider this, it's extremely important.
Thank you, Ms. Gomes. The clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Rick Lawrence.
Mr. Mayor, City Council will waste plenty of money in the future. I'll let somebody else have a second.
Okay, skipping on. Clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Ray Hall.
Ms. Shaw, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. I was here a few weeks ago, speaking to you guys about the rate increases on our water bills, and so, I'm here to follow up. We were told that, you know, everything is about budgets, everything is about, you know, fiscal responsibility. So, we were told that the water fund was a couple million dollars short. I would say, when Mr., when Jason stood before you guys, did anybody bother to ask him why that fund was short? Where's it going? I, I submit to you that in 2015, my last year with the city, the water treatment plant was doing annual water audits. On the website, you guys have a water quality report, but you don't have the water audit report anymore. And during 2016, they were saying that we were losing, there was unaccounted for water is what it's called by the Illinois Department of National, Natural Resources. $6 million was the last number that I had. Alderman O'Connor used to lose his, his lunch over that. And so, Mayor, the last two years, if you haven't seen one, that for some reason, they stopped talking about it and they didn't want to talk about it. The last time I spoke with the treatment plant, they said it was down to $2.5 million. There's no way that that happened. We did water surveys, so I'm asking you guys to have the Public Works Department tell you what their improvement plan is. Every city that has a outside possibility of having to connect to Lake Michigan water has to have their water lossage, or loss at less than 10%. At 22%, we're nowhere near that. You need to find out, is our water reserves in good shape? Will the aquifer, will that help? You know, is that going to hold up? Will the river hold up? My point of saying all of this is, you're coming to the taxpayers every year, taking an increase on our water rates to fill up a hole where there's water running out the ground that's going somewhere. We've replaced all the meters. I was there when we started replacing the meters. You did not do that, you did not reduce it to 2.5 million. What am I saying? Those numbers are fudged, they're not true. And we need to get busy finding out what's going on if you're going to continue to raise our rates every single year. And some of you aldermen have been around long enough to understand what I'm talking about. You have seen an audit before because some of you were here before I left. And so, we cannot keep going to the taxpayers, asking them to keep funding this when nobody's talking about it. So, for the sake of transparency, Mayor, we need to have those reports put back out there so that the public knows and understands. And we did get a commitment from the Public Works Director that the long-term control fee would be removed in five years when that permit expires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Have we exceeded our 30 minutes?
We're in 25.
Okay. The clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Saul Foltz III.
My name is Saul.
Three minutes beginning now.
Saul Foltz III. I have various issues and concerns within over the last, since '20 to '25, the property taxes. Mr. Mayor, you campaigned on that you were going to turn around and work on decreasing the property taxes. And I heard that you're seven, going to go up 7%. That means 30% since 2000 to 2026 is what the property taxes have been raised in the city. Okay. Second of all, we have to turn around. All like we says, everything's been about Juneteenth, but we have to talk about our cultures that make up the body of the City of Aurora. And when we talk about not having the flag raising and stuff for those events, like it was said, it means a lot to every cultural person in the City of Aurora. It has meaning in variations, many ways, of the struggles that they all went through. And to this administration and all the aldermen sitting up here on this board, is that you need to get out and communicate with your residents. You took an oath to turn around, to be, to work for the, those residents and make your decisions in the best interest of your community that you represent. And you all need to start doing that. Other words, we are still going to be left in the blind. Thirdly, there used to be a budget, as far as the budget, quarterly budget, that the taxpayers were able to see as far as where the actual revenue was being spent and what was being received in. Well, you need to resonate, re-resonate that and get that information to the community because the residents want to know where their taxpayers, their taxpayers' money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. The clerk, please read the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Gail Verdic.
I respectfully request to hold my comment until it gets to the unfinished business section for a word.
We're coming up on 30 minutes. Would a member of the council, we, how many people do we have left? We have four, four people. I don't know if anybody would like to make a motion to extend the public comment period beyond 30 minutes to allow those people who've signed up to speak.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, second by Alderman Seville. Will the clerk, please, call the role on the motion to extend the public comment period to allow the public to express their concerns.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuevos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. We'll continue to hear out the rest of the members of the public wishing off her public comment. I don't know if you want to come up now and take your moment. If you still want to cancel, that's fine.
I want to wait. I prefer to wait and see if I have to speak for the Aurora Turner.
We can't, we can't have a special public comment period when the agenda item comes before the council, so this is your, this is your one time to speak.
All right.
You'll, you'll have three minutes. Thank you, welcome. You have three minutes beginning now.
My name is Gail Verdic. I am the current president of Aurora Turner Club. The replating of the property and annexation project began under my predecessor, former President Mark English, while I served as the vice president. When the City of Aurora began the Indian Trail Project, we as a board decided it was the best time for us to move forward with our plan. Mr. Lusk's argument to deny this appears to be a personal vendetta against the Aurora Turner Club and its board of directors. His claims that our house at 1231 Mitchell Road will affect the value of his rental property at Turner Road does not make sense. His property views the High Tension Wire, Towers, Unilock Facility to the north, a social club, a landscape company, and a trucking company to the east. How can annexing our property into the city limits lower his property standard, property value? This annexation is what's best for Aurora Turners and the City of Aurora for possible future growth and development. I hope that you guys will agree with us and let us move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The clerk, please read the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Mark English.
It was covered by the president. I'll pass.
Thank you. Will the clerk, please, read the name of the next person wishing off her public comment.
Deanna Weiss.
Likewise, I'm also part of.
That was quick. And then, I think, Senator McLarenan?
No, no, remember I said I.
You're good. Okay. Okay. This concludes the public comment section of the council.
Mayor, a point of order, I believe the young lady who switched spaces with Brandon Toliver lost her position, but.
Ms. Peterson, would you like to make public comment?
Sorry.
No problem.
About the name thing.
Ms. Peterson, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening to you all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't want to repeat the, the voices of all the rest, but I do agree, I was very disappointed and confused and discouraged by your decision to cancel the, the flag raising of Juneteenth. And I urge you to reconsider because I do see the tremendous value in celebrating all the cultures. It is what Aurora is made of. We spent the last several years bringing people together in this city, and I think the flag raisings do just that. What I don't want to see is us putting our community leaders and organizations and events against each other. We are one community, and we are allowed to have more than one Black celebration. So, the celebration that happens in the park is very different than what happens at the flag raising. The flag raising represents so much to the community, and it also represented education. So, we're educating our youth, and it's giving them an opportunity to be able to learn about what Juneteenth is, to celebrate with their families and their friends, the old, the young, and for all of our community to come together and celebrate our freedom and our city together. With the flag raising, we also had a teen summit, which was very educational, which is a lot different than what happens in the park. Allowing the celebration to happen in the center of the city is very meaningful because it brings out everyone in all of our communities, again, celebrating this together. So, I do urge you to reconsider the flag raisings. They are not, they don't come with an egregious cost. the flag raisings. They are not, they don't come with an egregious cost. And again, you had the pride celebration, which is not, I mean, celebrating all culture and all organizations is important. You do also have lots of cultural boards that you didn't consult, not that you needed their permission, but you needed their input, because we are the listening ear to the community, and we, I am a longtime, lifetime resident of this city, along with my parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents. I am a member of Ward Seven, and I didn't get a call, or no one told me as a resident and a citizen that we weren't gonna have the flag raising. And I think this is a responsibility to all of you as our aldermen and alderwomen and our mayor to notify us of those types of changes with our cultural boards and organizations. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Madam Clerk, are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
There are not.
Okay. Next, we'll hear the, both the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk please now please read both agendas in full?
24-0726, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase III construction engineering services agreement with H.R. Green, and the not-to-exceed amount of $706,956, and the appropriation of $2,100,000 of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for the Sullivan Road reconstruction project. 25-0199, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement for federally funded P.E. R.O.W. with the state of Illinois for R.O.W. authorizing the execution of the standard agreement provisions, joint improvement projects on the state highway system, and the appropriation of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for Montgomery Road and Hill Avenue intersection improvement. 25-0289, a resolution authorizing the acceptance, acceptance of Anthem excavation and demolition as the contractor to demolish 306 North River Street and 316 North River Street. 25-0364, a resolution to approve the awarding of the Fire Station 3 renovation bid to T. Fisher Construction of Ingleside. 25-0376, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of Anthem excavation and demolition as the contractor to demolish 630 Hammond Avenue. 25-0383, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a highway authority agreement and associated environmental indemnity agreement supplement with FLYP 25 for a property located at 1125 Aurora Avenue. 25-0401, an ordinance vacating a city easement on the property at 400 Mercy Lane in Kane County. 25-0403, a resolution authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the cities for Financial Empowerment Fund and the City of Aurora, expanding the FEC expert partner scope of work to include the small business boost and to receive the $90,000 grant upon full execution of this third amendment. 25-0451, a resolution to execute a one-year contract with Allied Door for Garage Door preventative maintenance and repairs with an option for two additional years. 25-0460, a resolution authorizing the purchase of eight replacement mobile column lifts from Mohawk Lifts for $119,032.10. 25-0461, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Hunter alignment machine from Mohawk Lifts for $67,588.25. 25-0465, a resolution to approve GoGo Grandparent as the replacement contractor for the City of Aurora Ride Share Ride Solution Program through December 31, 2025, utilizing the remaining budget funding not to exceed $100,000. 25-0477, an ordinance vacating a city easement on the property located at the southwest corner of Independence Drive and Constitution Drive in Kane County. 25-0478, a resolution authorizing the execution of an encroachment easement and maintenance agreement with C.R. Aurora Land for a portion of the property located on Independence Drive and west of Constitution Drive related to the Hayday Final Plan. 25-0479, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Fox Metro Water Reclamation District for general services and cooperation on various projects. 25-0481, a resolution authorizing the execution of real estate contracts to purchase properties in the amount of $50,800 in appropriating rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for the Sullivan Road reconstruction, Agilon 2 Golden Oaks project. 25-0483, a resolution increasing the maximum number of Class D downtown fringe onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Nita Hardin, LLC in Ward Four. 25-0484, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A package sales convenience store beer and wine only liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from B.N.K. Food Mart in Ward Four. 25-0488, an ordinance amending Article II of Chapter 48 of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Utility Service Water and Sewer Rates and Establishing Rates for Said Services for the annual periods beginning July 1, 2025, and July 1, 2026. 25-0491, a resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement between the City of Aurora and Family Service Association of Elgin in support of the Aurora Police Department Crisis Intervention Unit for the period of July of 2025 through June of 2026. 25-0495, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for Phase II design engineering for New York Street Bridge Project. 25-0505, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, June 10, 2025 city council meeting. 25-0518, a resolution accepting the improvements and waiving the maintenance security for Wild Fork at 9:36, new state route, North State Route 59.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the items on both the direct to council consent and consent agenda as read? Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions of the, of the council, or does the council wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Alderman Masiacos?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item 25-0484 from the agenda, as it, after another additional read, I realize that my, one of my business clients is involved in that resolution.
We'll remove agenda item 25-0484 and place it on unfinished business. And I'm guessing at that time you'd like to recuse yourself from the council meeting.
Abstain for sure.
Alderman Bug?
Yeah, I'd like to remove 25-0488, remove it to unfinished.
Okay, the clerk will remove agenda item 25-0488. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, so the vote that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on the consent agenda minus agenda items 25-0484 and agenda item 25-0488.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Moving to unfinished business, the clerk, please call the roll on the next agenda item on unfinished business.
25-0419, a resolution approving funding support payments to VNA in the amount of $250,000 in 2025 and $250,000 during 2026 for a total disbursement of $500,000 in support of the recently constructed Bloomhaven Campus.
Is there a motion to approve this agenda item? Motion was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Bug?
Thank you. I have a document that's being passed around the dais for the aldermen for you to follow. I put this together mainly for myself, because I've been in Zoom the last couple of weeks, wasn't able to be with you in person. For those out there, when you're in Zoom, you have your laptop, you have your iPad, you're flipping back and forth from Granicus to documents. It's, it's not an easy thing to do. So I put this together on this item so I could follow along more easily, and the, the documents, the attachments that we had as the alderman was a long email string, which made it very difficult to follow. So I put this together. Of course, this involves a request from VNA to our former mayor and former chief of staff for a grant for $500,000. That initial request and discussions was in July 17, 2024. Discussions were had over the next week or so, and at that time, a agreement was made for a pledge of $500,000, which was to be sent to VNA after their occupancy certificate was received. But of course, it was supposed to go to city council in the late summer or early fall of 2024. That did not happen. We come to 2025, we have a new mayor, and then on April 17, we have a request from VNA to the new administration for payment of the $500,000, although it has never gone to finance, it has never gone to committee of the whole, it has never gone to city council. In fact, it never went through the budget process at all. Just a request to the mayor, the former mayor, for half a million dollars, and he agreed that he would give that to them. The, probably the most important thing in the early emails, the mayor stated that someone from the legal team would follow up with the VNA. I looked all throughout all the documents and never saw that legal was contacted, because legal would be the one to make sure the proper process was going through. I never found legal. I found VNA's legal being involved, but I never found the City of Aurora's legal department being involved. And that's where we come to today. VNA does excellent work, outstanding work in our city, and that's not, we're not debating that today. We're debating if we want to disburse $500,000 to this entity without it going through a budget process, without it being considered in our budget, because what did we do two weeks ago? I was in Zoom, but the city council passed bonds, which will raise property taxes a considerable amount. So when you do those things, you need to look at everything in a whole. And so my first question, follow-up from last week, one of the new aldermen asked an excellent question, and asked, why did this not go to the budget process? And the answer was, the mayoral staff, the former mayoral staff, but the answer last week was, there was not time for this to go through the budget process. Now, this agreement was made on August 7, 2024, and our budget process began in October of 2024 and went through December of 2024. If you ask Ms. Peterson, there were many budget amendments that came through city council during that time and have since come through this year. But the first time we learned of this was in April of 2025, not coincidentally, two weeks after the new mayor was elected. I hate to think what would have happened if the former mayor was still in the seat, if this even would have come to the city council. I don't know the answer to that. I don't even want to think about it. Well, that's where we stand right now. Do we as a body want to put forward a request for half a million dollars and it's not been considered fully through the budget process? There would be a lot of entities in this city who would like a half a million dollars from the city government. I could think of a group of people, I think Mr. Hall mentioned it, we're gonna be voting a little bit here on raising water rates. That's gonna raise about, I think it's about $700,000. It's for lead, lead service lines. As he asked the question, that's what it's for. So, I don't know, take $500,000, put it toward the lead service lines, I don't know. Maybe we wouldn't have to be raising taxes and raising water rates. When you put things through a budget process, everything is considered. Okay? So, as I said in Zoom, I, I have serious, just serious doubts about what we should do, the precedent that we, we would be setting. This is a new administration. We're going to watch very closely, so to so, dot our i's and cross our t's, but I believe those on the finance committee, we thought we were doing that last year. But we stand here with a half a million dollar request without it going through the budget process. So I will yield to my colleague, who I believe wants to speak on this.
So-
Alderman Franco?
Yes. Let's just start by, this is like the fourth meeting now that you've been blaming the past administration. We know there was an error made. I don't think there's a concern about the process. Nobody says, oh, no, that was okay to do. There was a mistake made. But when we keep bringing up and throwing people under the bus, it, it's unproductive. So let's just go there. I break it down to this. Do we believe that if they spent $18 million on that project, that of half a million dollars from the City of Aurora to provide services to the east side in that area that's regentrifying and making available healthcare for them is appropriate? We're not questioning the process. We know that there was a mistake made. I don't think anybody questions that. I don't think this administration is gonna follow through on that. Once in a while, that happens. We believe this mayor made a mistake on June 19. We're not gonna bring that up for the next couple of years. It's done. It's been pointed out. So let's get off of that. So I think right now, going forward, we should look at, is this appropriate to provide that amount of money for the cause that they need? I seem to think it is. It didn't go through the budget process, it's bad. But is it worthwhile? I don't even think it's a question. I don't believe, I truly don't believe in my heart that if we went through this thing last year, that anybody would say no to this. You want to keep blaming the process? Fine. But at the end of the day, we have to make a decision, and this is what's laid in front of us. You can blame all you want, but this is where we're at right now, and I think we need to act on it as that. Keep the unpredictivity, unpredictivity out of it, and let's move forward. That's kind of really, I think, where we're at with that. If anybody thinks it's not worthwhile to do that, I would like to hear that. But outside of that, I don't really think this is an argument, once we've already said that it was an error on our part, the city's part, the process's part. So, you know, leave, that horse is, you know, it's not really germane to this anymore. So that, that's really all my comments I have for this.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think we could all agree that there's been a lot of discussion going on the last almost year, and yet the council didn't know anything about it. I don't think that's the VNA's fault. I think that's just the way it happened previous year with the previous administration. The information should have been shared with the city council. Clearly, it should have been part of the budgetary process. Unfortunately, it was not, which brings us here this evening. But the question is, is this necessary? And do they provide a service for our community? Yes, they do provide a service for our community. This will be their, they now have three major sites in our community, West Side, Near East Side, and out at Farnsworth. And their clientele needs help. And I'm- And I'm prepared, even though the process has been flawed and faulty, I think it's well worth our endeavor to consider this in a favorable vote to assist in funding this so the V and A can provide the services that they're entitled to do and give for their clients. I will be voting yes in favor of this.
Alderwoman Smith.
So to not restate what Alderman Franco said and Alderman Seville, I do appreciate Alderman Bug's theatrics here with this. I think you took it a little bit too far, and, and you did a lot of blaming when we all knew this error occurred. We've all known, we've all known about this. But we also all know what the V and A does. We also all know that during COVID, the V and A was the only organization that provided us with COVID shots. We also know that the folks that live in that area, that are now housed in that area over in Bardwell, could very much use the V and A for their service. We also know that we have a lot of residents in our city that are underinsured or not insured at all, that utilize the facilities at the V and A. And when we went through COVID, quick story, I'll be very quick. I did a COVID shots for people with disabilities. And I met a man named Charles, and I'm not going to use his last name. He was a blind man. He had had no insurance. He had been underserved in the healthcare department. And he found me and wanted to come and get his COVID shot. He came and got his COVID shot. I met him at the door because he was blind. He went in, he was cared for, he went back for his second shot. He still today sends me emails thanking him for introducing him to the V and A because he has been under their care ever since. So these are the stories that the V and A does for our community. So yes, there was an error made. Yes, we've all known, we all know that. But I can't back, take, put my back to this process when I know how important the V and A is to our community. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Alderman Nunez.
Seeing as this clinic is in Ward Four, I would have to echo Alderwoman Smith's comment. And for anyone here tonight that has walked into any of the V and A locations, I ask you to think about the faces you see when you walk into those clinics, the people that are in need for care. And yes, absolutely, this was the wrong way to go about it. Yes, email communications is not how this should have gone through. But as Alderman Franco mentioned, we need to think about those individuals that go in every single day to these clinics and need their, need the V and A's help. And so with that, I will be voting yes for this.
Anyone else?
Mayor Lesh.
Alderman Barrow.
Yeah, just wanted to reflect back when, a long, long time ago, when I was an intern here at City Hall, the V and A was across the street. V and A was across the street. And just recently, they celebrated 100 years of providing good service in the community. I also was here when they relocated to the former Barbara Green site. It was, it was blighted, boarded up. And they took, they took that building and turned it into something to help the community. And they've always been there to help, to help the residents from the early days in the early 1900s. And they have grown with the community. They have many sites. They're helping many people all the time. So yes, City Aurora did drop the ball. So I just asked the council here, don't punish the V and A, don't punish the agency, and don't, don't punish the residents. I'm voting yes on this, but this is, my yes vote is on a non precedent setting basis. So if this happens again, it's incumbent upon us in this new administration to make sure this, that this doesn't happen again. Because the residents do care of what we're doing, what we're doing here. It doesn't feel good to try to come up with these dollars out of thin air. And I appreciate Mr. Minnick for finding the funds and finding a solution, a path to move forward with us. So let's just move forward. Thank you.
I appreciate the new era of accountability. So just to, I, I don't know if you have anything to add to the discussion, but so the council is aware, there's also an additional, I think, $1.5 million attached to this that did go through the city council prior to me even being sworn as, as an alderman. It happened on May 9th of 2023. And I think you've been holding that up to make sure that all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed as part of that agreement. And I can also assure the council, there's plenty of other expenditures that have been, were unbudgeted or went way over budget, and we'll be finding ways to address those as they, as they come forward. This is not the only one. So go ahead, if you want to share a little bit about the 1.5 or anything additional on this item.
Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, just a couple of quick items. Number one, the $1.5 million that we're referencing is actually an agreement between the city and the developer of the, of the Bloomhaven campus. Secondly, I would like to say that I do agree that it is unfortunate that it did not go through the budget process. However, I would point out that to, to this point, no, no city funds have been dispersed, and we are going through what we would typically go through with a contract or, or an agreement of this size to be able to, to go ahead and run that through and get the city council's approval for the dispersment of those funds. So we are continuing to, to require that those, that those funds be approved by the
Any other questions on this agenda item? Alderman Messiakos.
Thank you. We've heard a few things here. And again, just like the fire station, we also got a little bit into the emotional aspect on some things here as well, unfortunately. Brought a process, brought up theatrics. I don't think I saw any theatrics here this evening. We saw plenty previous eight years. But it ultimately comes down to, to policy. I believe this is what an organization finds when administrator lets go of a tiger's tail and leaves others to contend with the tiger. I don't say that lightly. This matter has exposed that we have a system of failed checks and balances and accountability mechanism to ensure this type of situation does not repeat itself moving forward. I believe that's what the residents want to hear. As we discussed at the finance committee, this type of subject matter requires attention of and to be deliberated in the RAP committee to evaluate if we require a policy that delineates how we deal with unauthorized expenditures moving forward. As much, I, as I have no issue with the V and A for their past requests and present expectation, I personally do not approve of the actions taken and not taken of those involved on the city's side on behalf of the residents. And as much as we want to move forward and some want to move forward right away, just keep in mind that V and A already built it out. They built this facility. I'd be very surprised if they couldn't wait a little bit longer till, till we figure out how to work it into our budget and properly address it for the residents. But I would like to express my gratitude to Mr. Minnick. Thank you very much for finding a way to at least temporarily configure a payment arrangement without adding debt service on the taxpayer in relation to the proposed payment. But regardless, I will be voting against this resolution before us this evening for an unprincipled budgetary approach for taxpayer funds. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bug.
I would like to commend your staff at this time. Of course, we started with the full 500,000. There was negotiations. V and A was gracious to do a split of the funds, $250,000. Now, $250,000, which will go through the budget process and to be dispersed. I don't remember the exact, something 2026 sometime. So I appreciate that measure and that negotiation so the, the city could get a better handle at least on half of those funds. And the, the 250,000 now, we just say, we didn't just fine $250,000. You don't just find $250,000. Yeah, we had interest coming in from a different source, and that source could have been used for any number of things. We are using it for this purpose. So as I stated before, I had concerns on the way this took place. I love the V and A. I would wish that the full 500,000 would go through the budget process, and thus I would be voting no.
Thank you, Alderman Bug. I think that's it. Will the clerk please call the, Alderman Larson?
Sorry. Yeah, I just want to bring up a couple of things. First of all, it's obvious that the process this went through was improper. It's also obvious that the V and A provides a good service to the community. Something that Alderman Bug brought up is that there are a bunch of, a bunch of organizations providing good services to our community, and it would be great to give money to everyone. Because this didn't go to the budget process, even if we did get money from another source, from interest, this $250,000 this year and $250,000 next year could have gone to other services. You know, I, I can think of other places that could use this money pretty urgently. So I think it's, it's important to recognize the V and A's service to the community. It's also important to make sure we're holding ourselves accountable to the process that happened and not necessarily push through things that the previous administration did if we don't agree with them. I believe, given what my colleagues have said, this will probably pass. I don't have a crystal ball, but it seems like it'll probably pass. And I do think that this deal with $250,000 now, $250,000 later is a lot better than finding $500,000 now. So thank you for working out this deal.
I have a quick question. Is there, is there, I guess my question would be, is there a legal consequence for us to not disperse these funds?
I would defer to legal on that. Good evening, Assistant Corporation Counsel Patrick Collins. There could be. That's why there's a.
There is a memorandum of understanding between the previous administration and this one.
There is, yes. And we also have the contract terms that are connected to the legislators, while that you've seen on there. That's why upon council approval, we would execute a contract with them that would waive any claims or anything else from the past.
So the first action that I took when I discovered this on day two of my administration was to send it to corporate counsel and to send it to Mr. Minnick to find out what had transpired. That's when they dug in and found all the emails to make that evaluation.
So what would be the consequence?
I can't speak for what V and A would do, but they could potentially sue us, come after us for the money, their costs, whatever, their out of pockets, anything along those
I'll just add one comment on that. It does say in the emails, as normally it always says, that that agreement was subject to council approval. So although it took a year for us to vote on it, for us to even review it, it took a year. Thankfully, someone did put that in the email string that this was subject to council approval. So that is standard language in any agreement we do. The mayor, the departments, the mayor's office may come up with the grandest of plans, and the city council may think otherwise and not approve it. So yeah, as they say, any, anyone can sue anyone, but thankfully, that language is in the email string.
Any other questions? No further questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
No.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
No.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
No.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item? And again, thank you, staff, for putting this together to work out the finances and, and evaluate this better. Thank you.
250421, an ordinance annexing property located at 1231 Mitchell Road to the City of Aurora.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Motion by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions on this agenda item?
Mayor Lesh.
Yeah, Alderman Barrow.
Yes, I'd like to make a brief comment on these three, 0421, 0422, and 0424. These are related to the Turner's Club property. What they want to do is annex property to the City of Aurora and change zoning for B2 business, general retail. And the, the map of the project is, is attached to your packet. And the, at the last council meeting, I had a gentleman that's a member of the Turner's Club approach me about 10 minutes before the meeting started and started telling me things that just, I just wasn't able to process and get to the bottom of what he was trying to ask in 10 minutes' time. So I respectfully requested that this be held here for two weeks so I could look into it. During that time, I was able to talk to some representatives in the Turner's Club and also to the Mr. Lusk as well and get the information on this. So I think it's just a difference of opinion of a, of a Turner's Club member with the, with the leadership and, and also the members themselves. This, a couple of things were voted on by the Turner's, their general meeting and by their, by their board. And they are in agreement of what they want to do with this property. And what, what Mr. Lusk was asking for is, is not reasonable or in, not congruent with the stuff that they're taking to convert this to a business use. So there is a house there, and the issue was whether or not we could ask the owner to, to not tear the house down. The owner, Turner's Club, intends to knock the house down and work with our fire department as a, as a potential training site for firefighters. So their, their future, the future use of this property, I think, is a good, a good use, considering the location of that on a very busy intersection, also in light of the new traffic signal on High Street. I think this would be a good use of that property. So I'll be voting yes, but I just wanted to explain why I had it held.
Thank you, Alderman Barrow. So this is in the first ward, and you're supporting the next three agenda items, having gotten to the bottom of it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other questions on this agenda item? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Their motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. The clerk, please read the next item on unfinished business.
250422, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development at 1231 Mitchell Road to be incorporated under the existing Aurora Turner's Plan Description under Parcel A and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of B2 Business District, General Retail. So moved.
Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll? A motion was made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco. Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
This motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. The clerk, please need, read the next agenda item.
250424, a resolution approving the final plan for Aurora Turner's Club subdivision located at 1231 Mitchell Road, 1215 Mitchell Road, and 500 East Indian Trail.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith. Seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions on this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
12 yes. Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item?
25-0501, a resolution approving the appointment of Yordana Wysocki as corporation counsel. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero? Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. I'd like to welcome Yordana Wysocki as our new corporate counsel. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item?
25-0514, a resolution approving the appointment of Allison Lindberg as Director of Sustainability. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? We know that's Alderman Nunez. Are there any questions on this agenda item? We can probably resolve that after the meeting.
I do just want to make a quick comment. I am in full support of Allison Lindberg for this role. Moving forward, as we look at future appointments, I would encourage that we continue to look internally before we look externally at candidates and see the talent pool that the city currently has with people that have experience navigating these waters and understand these roles. So I just wanted to share that comment. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Hearing done, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Now, we have two agenda items that were removed from the consent agenda. We have the clerk a minute to find those. Probably start with agenda item 25-0484.
25-0484, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A packaged sales convenience store beer and wine-only liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from B&amp;K Food Mart in Ward 4.
Motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Are there any questions on this agenda item or discussion? Okay. No questions or discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Cordially abstained.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no, one abstain.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item that was moved to unfinished business?
25-0488, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 48 of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Utility Services, Water and Sewer Rates, and Establishing Rates for Said Services for the annual periods beginning July 1, 2025, and July 1, 2026.
Is there a motion? Motion made by Alderman Franco. Seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions on this agenda item or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bug?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Bauer and the team at the Water Department for giving me information. We had a discussion on this matter. Of course, this is concerning raising the water rates. There's a group of people who have a senior exemption with their water rates. We found out it's about 4,000 households or residences. When we raise these rates, you know, it impacts the seniors. Seniors are mostly on a fixed income. The seniors, we know from the state of our nation at this time, are going to be hit hard. We just lost the funding on their rideshare program, and we had to come up with a new and creative way to help out in that situation. And those things are not going to stop. Our seniors are going to get hit very hard. So we tried to look and find funds that would possibly freeze that increase just on the seniors. And although we were not successful right now in the short timeframe, this is a two-year contract, and I hope to bring this back before the second year and hopefully find those funds to help out our seniors in freezing that possible rate increase. So I just wanted to share that information, the information that the Water Department provided. I will be voting yes at this time and hopefully bringing this back before the next year and the next year's increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bug. So just to be clear, what you're suggesting is that we look at a way to freeze rates for seniors in the future contract that'll come up in two years?
Those that qualify for the senior exemption. You have to qualify, yes.
Thank you, Alderman Bug. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Alderman Franco?
I'm going to give Mr. Minnick on this because I want to figure out the math on this.
If we could get staff to join us? Mr. Bauer, if you want to come on up, you might get a few questions yourself.
So I just want to understand, if we were to freeze the rates now, freeze the rates later, for those seniors in need, do we feel that the remainder of those funds needed to subsidize the water rates would come from the tax, the other taxpayers, the general public and taxpayers? Is that how that formula would probably work?
Well, you, the answer is, it depends.
It depends, okay.
Yeah. I mean, it depends on how you want to, how you want to structure it. I mean, there could be a situation where the amount of revenue that comes from the seniors, from those 4,000 households or thereabouts, is absorbed by the system, but ultimately, that will have some impacts down the road, too. We would need to either lower expenses somewhere else or absorb a loss.
And the reason I ask is because I know where Alderman Bug was going last week, and I just, my concern would be, if they're already getting an exemption, they're already getting a better rate, and there's people in the community who are not seniors, who are, you know, income, you know, locked in. And if we had to raise their rates for somebody that's already getting a benefit, that's, I don't know if the balance is right there. You know, maybe a lot of people can afford that to subsidize the seniors, but maybe there are those that can't. So if, I would have a problem if we were to go that way, you know, like putting it on the back of the taxpayers, who may or may not be able to afford it anyway, to give an extra benefit. I'm saying extra now because they're already getting the benefit for that. So I just want to, hopefully going forward, if we were to look at that, we take everybody into consideration on that because, you know, throwing that cherry on the sundae may not be the way to go with this, if that's the way we're going to go. So I just, I just want to throw that out there, you know, because I just don't want to burden other people because somebody happens to be a senior and they're already getting the benefit, that type of thing. So that's why I threw that out there.
Yeah, and the senior credit on the consumption part of the bill is actually 50%, so I mean.
If everybody, if everybody could do a favor, and if you're not speaking, please keep your, keep your microphone off so we can make sure to hear everybody. I just want to hit real quick, in 2027, when this comes up, so everybody understands, the unfunded mandate coming from the federal, from the federal government is a 10% of water replacement, which is 1,600 households. We're currently doing close to 500 to 300, depending on the year. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, Jason Bauer with the Department of Public Works, yeah, that's accurate. We're, that's the range we've been in in the last handful of years. We've been fortunate to get some funding. We got the federal funding through the State Revolving Loan Fund that is administered through the IEPA, so we've been doing good at that, and that's helped us get those numbers up to that 500. So actually, the water rate right now, we've ramped that up. Now, we are going to be at that 500 moving forward, starting in 2026. But yes, when it gets raised to 10% in '27, we will need to find additional funding sources, so.
Alderman Larson?
Yeah, regarding, regarding the lead line replacement and the rate that we're going to have to be replacing going up, is, is there any expected increase in funds that will be available to us from the state or federal government? If they're making us replace more, are they going to give us more money, or are-
Sure hope so.
-we going to be having to raise these rates?
I can answer that. I think I said it during the previous meeting. Congresswoman Underwood did say that she appropriated 3.5 million towards lead line replacement, but there's no guarantee, as Alderman Bug adequately pointed out, and I've been asking this in IT committee for probably six months as well. So there's no guarantee. But in addition to replacing all those lead lines, we also typically replace the water main in that area and do the whole thing when we tear up the road because a lot of it, depending on the area, and if those water mains have been replaced. So it's not just the lead line. There's additional financial need that this project will undertake.
Yeah, and I know we have the ongoing water main replacement project as well. And something that was brought up in public comment about water loss, I mentioned water mains needing to be replaced. Needing to be replaced is a big factor in that. Are we doing audits of water loss, and is there a way that we can make that available if we are?
We do it internally with finance every year, just to see where we're at, if the things we're doing are helping get that number to lower. And they have been coming down. We were at a pretty stagnant rate for quite some time, but over the last, I want to say, maybe three, four years, that number has been coming down. We've instituted a lot of different water loss control programs. We have meter monitoring now, so we can actually go to our larger users that are, have, you know, at your house, you've got maybe a 3/4-inch or a 1-inch meter, but we have users out there that have 3, 4, 6, 8-inch meters. And if those are misreading, that water's being used, and it's being used by that end user, but we're not getting anything on the utility for that. So we're actually monitoring those to see if they need to be replaced or repaired. We do water meter replacement on residences every 10 years. When the batteries die, we usually just replace the meter. That's been making a difference. The water main replacement's been making a big difference. We've, we're doing a lot more, we're tracking the water main breaks a lot more to kind of predict the areas that we need to focus on. It really helps us identify, like, okay, well, this one broke on this street, and this one's a block over, it's got to break now. You know, it's going to start to go down that same, that same road. So we do a lot of that. We also do survey the system. So right now, we try to get to either 20% to 25% of the system every year. So we'll actually, we hire a company, they come out, and they have sounding equipment, and that helps us identify where there might be leaks that aren't surfacing. If you've ever seen a water main break that's very severe, blows up the pavement, we just had one on Water Street here, about two feet over from where we had one on Water Street not too long ago, right in the same patch. So don't be surprised if sometime next year, we're going to be getting out to that one because the break history is going up, so. But some of the ones that don't surface are the ones that you just don't know about. So if you're not out actively listening to the system, you're not going to know. It's just going right into the ground. We've got a lot of sandy soils, so there's a lot of instances where that's not happening. So we've really ramped that up. That used to be maybe 10% to 15% of the system a year, and now we're really increasing that so that we can stay ahead of those types of breaks, too, because we just don't see them. And anything that leaks on a service line before a house, before it hits the meter, same thing. So we've got old B-boxes, we've got old services, so as we replace more of the lead service lines, you know, we're going to be replacing in old areas. And again, that's going to be coupled with replacing mains that are leaking. So we're trying to attack the losses two different ways. We're trying to make sure we're capturing the water that's actually getting used and slow the amount of water that's leaking into the ground.
Alderwoman Smith?
Do you have the ability to share with us what the water rates of our surrounding communities are?
Yeah, that was in the presentation. We're right in line with everyone else, even with-
It was. The presentation seemed like forever ago.
It does, yeah. It was a while back, but yeah. Yeah, we're right in, we're right in line with everyone else. There's maybe, there was one community that was quite a bit lower, but they don't just use water rates to help cover the cost of furnished water, but everyone else, pretty much right in line. Now, the graph is up there now. Those two on the left, the two green ones, that's our current rate and our proposed rate. I don't, is that?
We don't have a graph. We have Alderwoman Babe.
I think I might have a hard copy.
It's okay. No, that's okay. I can look it up.
But yeah, we're right in line with everyone else. I'd say we're lower than half, right in line with about half. And then there's, like I said, there's one that's significantly lower, maybe one or two that are just- No, one or two that are just a little bit lower, but everybody else, we're pretty much right in line with and quite a bit lower than some.
Thank you.
And one other statistic, I think you said we're replacing four miles a year, but we need to be replacing eight miles a year.
It's probably close to three, but yeah, we should be, we should be-
Three, not eight.
Yeah, three and eight, yeah, giving us more credit than we deserve. But yeah, it should be closer to eight, based on, a good rule of thumb is that a water main's going to have a 100-year lifespan, and if you've got 800 miles of pipe, you should be replacing eight miles a year. So yeah, we're a little less than half of that. So, you know, if we can incrementally increase that, that'll also help. But obviously, to replace more water main, that's also a water rate increase, so. And we are kind of, that number has come down because we've been trying to supplement and meet that, the lead service line replacement. So a lot of money that would have maybe gone to water main replacement is, you know, that's not going up as quickly as it should.
Alderman Nunez?
Everyone knowing the age of the neighborhoods in Ward 4, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that I get this question on a daily basis from residents, you know, when's my line being replaced, when's my line being replaced? But with the federal mandate coming down, and if these rates were to increase, share with us again, how many years we predicted originally to replace these lead lines? And then with this increased rate, how much further down does that come?
So it would go from 33 years down to 10 years. Are you talking about with the increase in the mandate? Not with the increase in the water rates? I'm sorry.
With the mandate, and then with this rate increase, does that match?
No, this rate increase would just keep us right at that 3% a year or 33 years. So there would have to be something different done in 2027, depending on what other funding mechanisms are out there.
And I think one more thing, just a potential budget increase, is that Public Works, when we move to that big enough of overhaul of our systems, is probably going to want a person to specifically oversee the lead czar, I think, or someone to oversee this whole project, because there'll be a lot of work going on in neighborhoods, a lot of communication with people and so forth that needs to happen, so they want to have one person over that.
And if it's, and if it gets to 10%, just to tag onto that, if it gets to 10%, it would be more than just one. We've actually got the one position budgeted right now, but we're getting by with the staff that we have. It's, can be a little tough at times, especially with all the other components of the mandate, with the annual reporting and mailers and all these. You know, now we have completely different types of notices that have to get distributed, so we're getting by. And, you know, we've just felt, we're trying to be conservative. It's not a huge dollar amount position, but if we can take that money, and even if it just replaces an extra 10 lines a year, and we can handle it with our current workload, we're doing that. But it's getting harder. The sampling process is getting more difficult, and the notifications are getting more difficult. So administratively, it's a lot, too. So yeah, certainly, if it triples, it's going to be hard, but.
Alderman Bug?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciated Alderman Franco's comment. I did not suggest last week that we do anything to impact the current residence rate at the expense of the seniors. And that was not the discussion I had this week with Mr. Bauer or his team. It would not raise the rates of the current residents a penny. So those were the discussions that we had.
Any other Alderman on this agenda item? Being no further questions, thank you both for answering questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
No.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. This agenda item is approved. We are in need. We have two agenda items under new business. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business? Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. new business? Motion, motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benwillows?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Will the clerk please read the agenda item under, the first agenda item under new business?
250523, a resolution authorizing various city officers and employees to hold positions on the board of Onlight Aurora and any subsidiary thereof for the purpose, for the specific purpose of representing the interests of the city thereon.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Alderman White, is there a second? Second by Alderman Larson. And then I guess we're probably going to go with some questions and discussion, so I'll just ask the attorney to give us sort of a short update so we can talk about why we're bringing this at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the early teens, Onlight Aurora has had a contract with the city under master, master agreement to operate significant portions of our fiber-optic network. As part of the initial setup of Onlight Aurora, the mayor, the, the head of IT, the head of IT as well as an Alderman have been members of the Board of Directors. The purpose of this resolution is effectively to confirm that authority of the city council to allow those individuals to continue to serve on the board of Onlight to represent the interests of the city.
Question?
Alderman Franco?
Why, why do we have to do that if we already approved it? I mean, is it just to refresh?
There is language in state law that talks about when members of city councils serve on nonprofit boards to represent the interests of the city, that the appointment has to be done by way of the, by way of action of the city council. I wasn't able to locate specific authority to do that, so as a protective measure, I wanted to make sure that this goes through.
Oh, so had, had you found that, we'd be good to go again?
Exactly.
Because you can't, okay, I, I was just trying, trying to figure out why if we did it, do we have to do it again? But that makes sense.
Certainly by acquiescence, and certainly over the passage of time, it has been the expectation that those three individuals serve on the board of Onlight. This, I want to make sure is clearly part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions on this agenda item? Alderman Mesiacos?
I want to ask legal counsel, has he found the agreement between the city and Onlight Aurora?
There are three agreements, and those are readily available.
Do you mind sharing those with us? Because in the past, it wasn't provided for us. And for some reason, it couldn't be found. And this was around the time when Alderman Large and former acting mayor Bob O'Connor was chairman of the Finance Committee.
There are three master services agreements. You're providing for what's called an indefeasable right of use agreement for our fibers with Onlight. Those are all, all three available. The most recent amendment was, I want to say, 2018. So all three of those agreements are available, and those can be provided very easily. I'm not, I'm not sure what question specifically Alderman O'Connor had asked at the time. The agreements have been available. It may have been information about Onlight's performance of those agreements that may have been the subject of his inquiries.
Well, the subject of the inquiries, part of it was on, it was on record at the Finance Committee about seven or eight years ago. And nothing could be found, and nothing would be given. And it directly landed per the chief of IT, it was on the desk of the, of the mayor.
We can certainly have those three agreements provided to you.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And I guess I'll just say, as, once we find out the status of their financial status, I've heard we're a million dollars indebted on light. I'm not sure what's true, but once we take this position, I'll make sure to communicate clarity to the council what we find. But would appreciate your support tonight on this resolution.
Mayor? Alderman Nunez?
What does the timeline, and maybe this question for legal, what does the process and timeline look like for the Alderman selection on this board?
The manner in which the, the current bylaws, or the most recent version of the Onlight bylaws we have, is as soon as the board is constituted, the remaining members of the board then select the Alderman Director. So I would imagine as soon as the board is reconstituted with the new mayor and a new chief information officer, a meeting would be called, and that would be within the scope of Onlight's authority, their board, to select that additional member. This provides that authority for whoever that Alderman is and whatever successors to continue to serve on the board. It also provides language that if those three directors see fit to seek to amend the Onlight bylaws so that some three individuals who are not members of the city council but are appointed by the city council to serve and represent the interests of the city, that would be permissible as well, so as, this way we're not forcing city employees and officers to effectively wear multiple hats.
Any other questions on this agenda item? No, no further questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benwillows?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item under new business?
250526, a resolution approving a parking lot usage agreement with OPUS Inspection Technologies for the purpose of providing a mobile emissions testing public service at the Aurora Police Department.
So moved.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Mayor Lesh? Do you want to, do you want to offer a short presentation, Mr. Rowley?
Sure thing. Commander Bill Rowley, Aurora Police Department. This was brought to us from Illinois State Representative Barbara Hernandez, who was present earlier, but I think she may have had to leave. She has partnered with OPUS to provide a mobile emissions testing service as a free service to the public. She and the organization OPUS got together. It's being funded entirely by, excuse me, Representative Hernandez's office, and they were just essentially looking for a good place in the city to conduct this free mobile emissions testing. They reached out to the Aurora Police Department a few months ago to see if our front lot would be available for use and provided a parking lot usage agreement. I believe legal was involved, and ultimately, the decision was made to bring it for council as a resolution for your awareness. Again, no cost to the city, and there are various states, as you'll see in your legislative item, that the event is planned.
Are there any questions of the council?
Another question.
Alderman Franco?
So we come over there and get our emissions tested. Does that get us off the hook with the state of Illinois if we pass? Or we still got to go through theirs, too?
I suspect that, that OPUS is, has some sort of partnership with the state of Illinois where they're, the state of Illinois would accept the, the inspection by OPUS. I think that's the purpose of doing it, mobile versus having members of our community drive to another area to have their test.
Well, that's a good idea. And I didn't know if there was going to be a little redundancy in there, but if that's, if it's a one-stop shopping there, that'd be wonderful. Perfect. Thanks.
Alderman Nunez?
Has OPUS shared, or has there been discussions around possibility and increased traffic as people go to their testings? I know some of us have been to the testing facilities before and waited a little bit.
Well, they did provide in their, in the attached parking lot use agreement, in the last few pages, they did provide a route map that they presented to us. And this is very typical of something that we would do if we were endorsing even a police department-related event. I suspect it's probably very difficult to anticipate the amount of traffic. We are fairly well-suited, even though we're right off of Indian Trail, we are fairly well-suited to accommodate any kind of increased traffic. Coming off of a street like Indian Trail would obviously be better than, say, a neighborhood street or, or something like that. So it's an easy right turn in, right turn out situation, and I think it would be most likely the most safest place to have something like this.
Second question. Are there any other examples of other municipalities that have partnered with OPUS that we're aware of?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Alderman Barrero?
Yeah, Mayor Lesh. My, my question has to do with the logistics. You know, I think this is a great service, you know, for the residents not to drive all the way to Naperville. But I just, I just, you know, have a question about the, the capacity, because it's not the very big parking lot. And when you go to the, to the testing site, you know, they have a lot of lines, you know, people are waiting in line for admissions. The lines get really long. So I just wonder about the capacity there, and if there was any thought to the, the use of the, the Spring and Lincoln Lot or the ATC, might be a lot more capacity there.
Sure. And again, this was presented to us by Representative Hernandez's office. It was their suggestion that it be at the police department, I think, not reading between the lines, but I suspect she thinks that doing it at the police station would perhaps be a safer place for the motoring public. In terms of capacity, again, it's hard to anticipate how many folks would show up. There are several dates planned, so, and the, the logistics of this will be borne by OPUS and by Representative Hernandez's office. I'm sure that if either of them asked for our assistance, we could have patrol units, for instance, be available as needed and as our shift allows.
Is it, is it appointment-based?
No, I don't believe so.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, I, I can share with you that there will be no, on July 8th, the testing will be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On July 9th, it'll be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. On July 10th, it'll be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And on July 12th, it will be from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's noted in Exhibit B on the attachment in legislative.
Any further questions, the commander?
And just so the, the rest of the councils are aware, we were not 100% sure whether this had to come through council officially, but it came to us at the last minute through Representative Hernandez's office. So we, we moved it directly to the city council under, under new business to make sure that everybody saw it. And I'm sure we'll learn from this experience and adapt and improve on it in the, in the future. But thank you for accommodating them, and we'll see how well the community responds. No further questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm s-
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead. Alder, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Babe has a question for you, commander.
Sorry. I had to ask two, three times. So will these dates be published online on city's website or Facebook or publicly?
Because this is Representative Hernandez's initiative, I think the plan is for her to publish the, the dates and publish the event through her office. This, this is not a, this is not an event planned by the Aurora Police Department. They're just asking to use our facility, so we're not taking on the responsibility of, of advertising or any of that. I think Representative Hernandez's office is handling all that.
So there won't be any city communications, also because we don't want to, some of the potential overcrowding and traffic issues that other Alder people have brought up here, I don't think we want to accelerate that. But her office will be able to promote it. And you can probably find those graphics if you want to share them with people in, in your wards, or take the items that, the agenda items, turn them into an email if you want to communicate to people in your wards that you think will benefit from this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman White?
So in conversations with Illinois State Representative Hernandez, this is, is this a test pilot to see if an emissions facility makes sense in the area, or is this a, more just a discussion to have a one-time service to the community?
I, I believe from what I understand from the initiative is that this is just a chance for Representative Hernandez to provide a service to the community. I don't believe we're looking to test a future site or, or anything like that. That's never been communicated.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
A lot of the state agencies have mobile units, whether for the, there's a mobile driver's license facility and other services. The state treasurer will come out, and they have a cash back money thing where they go hunting for people's money. So this is a, just one of the menu items that state representatives and senators get to provide to their community.
No further questions? No further questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benwillows?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. We'll move to the bills. I don't know if any members have questions on the bills, or if Mr. Minnick wants to answer any of those questions, but is there a motion to pay the bills as presented? Okay, motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussion on the bills? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.